My name is David Brown and I am the Chair of the Newburgh School Board.
Tell me about yourself, why do you run for school board?
Uh Franklin Graham challenged me four years ago at the Canby Billy Graham Crusades. And I didn't know it at the time, but he asked, what do you do? And I'd spent most of my life, you know, coaching and, and working with youth and uh he just asked, what do you do? And he was pretty emphatic about, you know, our local politics and, and then I just had hundreds of people uh come up to me. It was my last year at, at Newburgh High School after twenty years and people just kept saying, you have to run for the school board. We, and I at first said no, and then I was, you know, you start thinking about doing something different, public service and, and then I put my name in it, won the race and, and that's kinda, you know, how it's turned out.
How are you feeling right now with the recall?
Oh, it's stressful, you know, I mean, for sure. I don't like recalls. I think we had our vote, we had our elections and, and everything. And I think the, I think we diminish people's voting power when we, we say you're wrong. Uh, you know, win or lose, we all are gonna win or lose on who we vote for on, on every election. But it is part of the process, so uh there's uh, i- i- it is something that people can do. Um, it takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, um, a lot of money. And that could be all focused on kids and education and, and so that's, that's not good.
How are you feeling about your chances with the recall?
Oh, we feel really good. Um, you know, we're uh, you know, again, you never know how things are gonna turn out. You know, I've, I've been in athletics and coaching for, forever and it's, you know, you lose to teams you should have lost or beat. You, you beat teams you should have lost to and, and uh, so you never can tell in these things. People are working hard on both sides. Um, I would just say, uh, we, obviously we feel like a no vote's the right side on this, this time. Uh, we're fighting for kids and, and parents, you know, that's my whole thing. It's, it's definitely not because of uh, you know, uh, money or rewards or something we get. Uh, so um, you know, I, I like the fact that uh, we have so many people are so passionate. And, and I think what's exciting me more than anything is just how many people are stepping up and they're getting involved. And uh, that's exciting for our country because we need that big time.
Um, tell me about the ban on political symbols. It started as a ban on pride and Black Lives Matter symbols. Why I approved that in the first place?
Well, the, the, it's been so misconstrued and that's unfortunate. Uh, it was politics in the classroom, simple as that. Uh, we've always had the American flag, the Oregon flag in Oregon, and that's the way it's been for, forever. And a couple of years ago, our district office allowed those uh, flags to come in. The people on the board who voted for the ban has nothing to do with uh, uh, kids of, of BIPOC or, or gender, anything like that. Uh, we support those kids a hundred, ten percent. It just came out as simple as that, politics in the classroom. And um, they are political and they are adult-driven and our kids are being used uh, in this situation. That's, that's not, that can't happen, not in public schools. And um, we made that decision solely based on politics. Because if we keep going down this road, if we lose this recall, then you're gonna have to see every flag in every classroom. And that means every flag from both sides of the spectrum. And that's not what kids need. That's not what our schools need.
I think that that's an argument that's been made by a lot of people, that the initial ban was specifically for BLM and Pride flags. Why those two things specifically?
Those are the ones that were hung up. Those were the first two. And a- again, NRA, um, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, just you, you, a Biden flag, a, a, a Trump flag, you name it. If we go down this path, we have to go down this path all the way and people will do that. You know, there's gonna be people on both sides who are gonna want their, their flags in there then. And, and again, it's not about education or the kids then, it's about what adults want. And so um, they shouldn't have been allowed in our schools. We could have had way other uh, different processes to protect and help, you know, these students without doing that. And we, that's what we should have done, so.
Were there ever any complaints about these flags to you guys?
Yes, lots. And that's what started it all. And um, you know, again, I think that with the, the complaints now, you know, we've been in a divisive atmosphere for almost two years. And, you know, COVID hasn't helped that at all. That, that has added to the pressure that everybody's under. But, you know, people are complaining about everything on both sides and uh, the focus on education has, has gotten pretty thin. And, and public education can be really good if we get our focus back.
Were those complaints documented?
Um, some were, some weren't. Uh, uh, you know, people, uh, yeah, both ways, documented, undocumented.
Would you be able to get that documentation to us?
Um, I'd have to check, you know, and see how that all works uh, at the district office. Um, that'd probably be difficult, but maybe.
Okay. Um, what do you say to the kids who say that they needed these symbols to feel safe in the schools?
You know, I worked in the schools and I, I, I've talked to lots of parents who, who've said that and kids. And I would say, for me personally, the, the culture is where it's at. It's not, not a flag or a banner. I feel like that that's a real temporary fix. And if we really care about that, that, that student, if we really care, then we're gonna have a culture there from the first person that sees that child walk through the door until the last person who sees them before they go home. And their mom and dad ask them, how was your day? And when they ask them, how was their day, I, I want every child to say, it was great, loved it, you know, school was a blast. And I think we all had different teachers and different times in our, our school career that that happened. And um, you know, that's what I want for every child. But if, to, to think that we can put up things like that, that that's gonna be the, the, the final fix is, is not, not accurate. It's, it's absolutely the culture. We could change it in one day in Newburgh or anywhere else. And it will go to every town. It's already going uh, places. You guys will, pretty soon won't be getting to go to Newburgh anymore. You'll be going to other towns for the same issue. And uh, it's the culture. And I've seen when a culture is great, students flourish. And when the, the culture's not great, it's, it's gonna take a lot more than flags and banners to, to make them feel, feel safe.
You mentioned the culture. I know that we've had some high-profile incidents of racism and, you know, just talking with kids that I've talked to. They've experienced some racism, some homophobia, some transphobia. What do you say to, or what do you say, I guess, about that culture? How do you plan to address that?
I definitely think it's here. It's, it, we're in a different world than we were a couple of years ago, so it's not the same. I think people that are trying to think that we live in the same world we did a couple of years ago are uh, they, they gotta, they gotta really kinda wake up and realize where we're at today. And it's not the same. Even when I've been on the school board for two years and nine months, it's different. It's way different. I would say to all those kids that uh, you know, I would like to spend our time, rather than recalls, sitting down with not only those kids, but the kids, uh, every single kid in the school and say, you know, what's best. But I'll tell you, for those, for those kids, and I've worked with, you know, all kinds of kids from, from, from different uh, genders and, and, and colors of skin. It doesn't matter to me. It's the fact that I want them, again, to have a great experience. And we have to figure out in two thousand twenty-two how we're gonna do that. Because we have a lot of adults running around that were thinking it's the same as two thousand seventeen and two thousand fourteen. It's not. And we do have different issues to deal with. And um, I will say, there's a lot of adults out there pushing these agendas. And our, our kids are, are uh, are the victims and are being used on this stuff. And, and our kids just wanna go to school and go to school. And for kids that are, you know, under fire, having a hard day, uh, having a hard time with some of the things that happened to them, uh, we definitely have to sit down, right and left, conservative, liberal, however anybody wants to label people. And we have to uh, definitely address these things in a way that's gonna benefit every kid in the school. And every staff member. Staff members are going through this too. And, and uh, there's staff members that definitely in Newburgh, you know, are, are part of the recall. And there's definitely staff members fighting the recall. And so they're going through a lot. And it, 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 there's people that don't wanna go to work anymore because of all the politics on our schools. And, and uh, I'm just gonna say it. We were at Gladys Knight the other night with the Oregon Symphony in Portland. And she stopped her concert mid-concert and at the snitch and said, we could solve all of our problems in one minute. Just turn to the person next to you and just say, how are you doing? And love on them for, you know, she goes, in one minute, we could solve all of our problems. And, you know, you think of that, oh, that's pretty nice, you know, Gladys, that's pretty simple, but it's true. If we just laid down our swords and everybody just stopped all this stuff, we could, we could literally uh, get pretty healthy in a day. So.
Alright. Do you think that there's a culture or do you think that there was instead of racism happening in Newburgh?
It's been way overblown. Um, people are hypersensitive to this now. They're hypersensitive in Newburgh. You know, we've been called the tip of the spear. Um, uh, again, I'm really disappointed in adults who push this. And I know it has been because I've talked to the parents, I've talked to kids. Um, do kids experience some of this stuff? Absolutely. It's been around since I was a kid and uh, uh, but it's, it's uh, a- again, we have lots of different things that happen to our students every day at school. And um, going to high school's rough. Middle school's difficult. I think anybody that went through those, if you step back and just contemplate what you went through at that level, it's a tough time to get through. And uh, I'd like to see adults, again, take a big step back and, and, and stop trying to uh, make all these things the highlight. And, and just get back to focusing on helping the kids get through the day. And I think if we get back to a healthy culture, that means we're getting back to raising the bar, focus on education, focus on their extracurricular activities, help those students be successful. And I think a lot of these things will solve themselves.
Same question. Do you think that there's a cul- uh, a culture of homophobia or transphobia in Newburgh?
No, I, I think it's, again, I think that narrative's been driven by certain people. And uh, you know, I think most communities would step back and say, we have issues in our town, but we, we have a really good town here. It's, it's a lot of good people. Um, it's just a divisive time. And what divided our country divided Portland, came to Newburgh. It just got to Newburgh a little sooner than all the other towns. I talked to people from all over the state, small towns, mid-sized towns like Newburgh to a little bit bigger. And they're experiencing it in their schools and, and uh, it's a cultural thing we're gonna have to really come to grips with. And uh, we're just kinda ahead of the curve. So we didn't invent this. We're just having to deal with it.
Why did you fire Joe Morello?
Well, it's, it's a tough one to talk about now. There's a lot of uh, you know, there was a lot of reasons. But it was just a direction of our school district, a difference of how we can uh, you know, move our district in a healthy way. And uh, there was a disagreement and that's how we had to move on.
Did it have anything to do with him not enforcing the political symbols ban?
No, I mean, there was a lot of reasons, but uh, there was just a direction of the school district.
How long had you been planning on firing him?
Oh gosh, when there was no big timeline on that, it was just uh, I think it was back in November, I, I, exact date, twenty-third or whatever. It was just uh, it just was a culmination of a lot of things that had to happen, so.
Did you approach Mark Fieldman about the superintendent job?
No, um, I know Mark. I met him, um, oh gosh, several months ago. But no, I just talked to him recently too and we laughed about that because it's like, I know who he is. I know he's running for governor. I know um, I heard him at a conference and I liked the way he spoke. And he was talking about the no judgment thing in his school district. And I was like, wow, I'd like to know more about that. And that was that whole discussion. That whole thing got totally flipped, turned around. You know, we're gonna do a complete search for a superintendent and find the best man, woman uh, we can find for, for Newburgh Schools moving forward. And I wanna find a good, strong leader, you know. Uh, we've had managers. Now we need a, a really strong leader, especially now, being divided in Newburgh. Um, with everything we've gone through, we need a, we're gonna need a strong leader.
Have you approached anybody else about the job?
No. No. In our next meeting, we'll be discussing a, a search firm and how, how to go about that whole process. We had somebody hired and um, back in December. I wish, I wish that could have happened. Uh, again, that thing got misconstrued. We had a search firm and we asked him to give us a short timeline and a long timeline. And the other uh, firm uh, said they could only do a long one. Um, I've been through two of these processes and seen the long ones. I didn't feel like worked. Um, we have an opportunity now to uh, we need a leader. We, we need it sooner than later. You know, we can't wait forever. We have a great new intern superintendent. And uh, I uh, uh, I think that uh, we could have had a lot of good applicants in by now. I wish we had. We would have had a month into this to look at people applying. You could have applied. We could have looked at your resume and said, are you, are you ready to be a superintendent? And, but we're not. We had some people being really rude to, to, to uh, the person who uh, was awarded the contract. And he just looked at it and said, this is not worth it. These, these people are uh, they were just mean to him. And he wasn't willing to, to deal with that. And that was unfortunate. It shouldn't have happened that way.
Tell me more about what you're looking for in a superintendent?
Well, I, I think I, you know, I mean, I, I think I said a leader. You know, there's a big difference between a leader and a manager. I think uh, when you look at a leader, they don't have to use fear, control, or manipulation in their, their, their formats. They know how to rally people. And that means rally everybody. Uh, we have schools in our district who felt underrepresented by the, the district office. And uh, that's not okay. And we, we have a pretty good-sized school district. We're losing a lot of kids over the last number of years, but we're still a pretty good-sized school district. And it's a big job. We need a leader who's gonna come in and take the teachers' union, who's, it's pretty interesting right now. You know, there's some in the recall, there's some that aren't. They're gonna, he's gonna have to pull them together, educational union, uh, the classified, um, the district office. He's gonna have to pull the parents together. And um, it's gonna take a, it's gonna take a strong leader for that. And I'm, I'm anxious. I think we'll find somebody. I really do.
What do you say to the people who say that enacting this political symbols ban and the lawsuits that came after it, as well as firing Joe Morello, what, they say that it's a bad financial decision for the district? What's your response to that?
I would just say, um, sure, you know, firing a superintendent is, could cost money. Uh, but the, the amount of losses we've had in students is tremendous. We're in the millions of dollars. And so the direction of our district's far more important than that. Um, I think the other part of your question was, is the uh, the, the recall, the people that initiated recall uh, don't have to pay a dime to do this. It'll cost around seventy-five thousand dollars for that. Um, but that's their right. They can do that. So every recall is expensive. And um, so when you, when you talk about uh, the revenue coming in, uh, we've, we've got to lead our school district in a better way moving forward. So we don't lose families. And we've lost some families, like all districts, because of COVID and, you know, the COA on, online. But as things rebound and we get past COVID and we get back to normal, parents are gonna put their kids where there's a great education. And we're low on our test scores. We're low in the state. And we shouldn't be that way. We've got too many good people in this district to be low. And, and we're only low because we've lost our focus. And um, that's, that's, everybody's gotta roll up their sleeves on that one. And so people can be mad at the school board for those decisions. But uh, we, we do have an opportunity to have a great school district. And um, I wanna be part of that. So I want everybody to vote no. I wanna find the right superintendent to help lead us. And I, I think that'll happen.
Um, so just so I'm clear on your perspective, as far as like paying out Joe Morello's salary and then defending a couple of losses that have come out, do you think that that's less than like what you're losing as part of attendance?
The lawsuits are, they're, they're unfounded. They're not gonna go anywhere. Um, they're uh, they're, we have a budget for some legal fees. But uh, we did everything proper. We didn't do anything wrong. Those have been uh, they're just not gonna, they're not gonna go anywhere, so.
Why did the school board hire an outside attorney?
Well, when we got into the, the flag and banner, we were told at every meeting that we had, that's a legal thing. That's a legal thing. And when you're on a school board, you're not a lawyer, you know. None of us are. And so uh, we weren't getting any legal advice at all. And so we uh, have a budget for that. And it's totally our prerogative to bring in another person. And we did. And we brought in a person that we could turn into a, at a, at a meeting and say, is that something we can do, cannot do? And it's as simple as that. And uh, we have a budget for those kinda things. It's totally proper. We, we did everything exactly the right way. And again, it's unfortunate that people uh, have uh, misconstrued that. But uh, when you need legal advice, you need a lawyer. And that's why we did that.
Did the district not already have its own lawyer?
But not at the meetings, not at uh, at that time. Um, we have people through uh, uh, more of a, kind of a distant type thing. But uh, there's a lot of school boards, a lot of boards have a, a lawyer at meetings. And uh, when, when you tackle something bigger like, you know, flags and banners, uh, you definitely get into some things where you need legal advice right away.
And why Ty Smith specifically?
Just came highly recommended. Lot of integrity, a good man, a strong lawyer. And uh, you know, we had to find somebody that uh, that fit all those, those things. And he did.
Have you and the other board members ever met in secret outside of court?
No. And, you know, and that's, that's really another, you know, I hate to say the word lie, but it's a lie. It's just never happened. Um, clear back in the election time, uh, you know, we sit back and you can't have uh, four people meet and talking about school board meetings. Now, four board members could meet. We've never have. You could meet for something and just talk about basketball or something like that. But we've never even done that. And so it's, it's, it's totally, you know, it's a lie. It's never happened.
Do you have any connection with outside, like bigger conservative groups?
Um, Free Oregon came and, and helped run a rally or helped do it. They came to a rally and just held signs. Uh, you know, way back, I remember during the elections, you know, there was, there was people saying we had national Republican coffers and money and stuff like that. And we, we chuckled. We started off with a grassroots movement, about twelve people. And people were just upset. I got invited to a house and we talked. And that's how it all started. This is so grassroots, it's, it's Oregon at its finest. And it, and that's the truth. It's just, there is no national organization. There is no national money being spent, you know, on our behalf. Uh, a lot of people can donate to PACs and things like that. And, and almost all of this. The amount of money we've spent on this recall, by the way, is mini-school compared to the, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars that's been spent to recall us. And that money, that money's come from Hollywood. That money's come from state unions. That money's come from all over. Where we're just a bunch of, you know, locals where people have uh, banded together and we've probably spent, oh my gosh, half of, maybe one or two percent of what they spent. So it, it's crazy. It's, it's, it's uh, but it, it is the narrative. There's a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of misdirections. And, and I guess that's, you know, not being a career politician, I've, I've learned a lot in the last few months, what, what people will do. I've spoken into microphones like this and had my words totally spliced and diced and turned around. And I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. Uh, but that's happened. And we've had people steal our signs all over town. We did catch uh, two men who were stealing those and they've been charged by the police. And six times, one guy stole signs out, right? Uh, oh, five hundred yards from here. And they caught him red-handed. And so, you know, things like that happen. Uh, awful emails, awful things said in public, awful things on Facebook. I mean, I think if, if we learned anything in this world, Facebook can be a very bad thing, you know. And it, it's too bad it just can't uh, be used to talk to mom and grandma and that kinda stuff. But, you know, again, we talked earlier before we started this interview. And there's things you and I would never say to each other in person that people feel totally capable and, and free to say on Facebook. And it's, it's mean. And it's wrong. And it's, people attack people's character. We've had our jobs came after, you know. Um, and, and a couple of people on, on the board got fired by, by the, the need group here in Newburgh. And, and I've asked some of those people, I had coffee last week with five of those people. And I said, uh, four, sorry, four of those people. And I'm like, wha- how in, in any shape of this world is that okay? That I would, you know, try to get you fired from KGW. Why would I do that? Um, you gotta do your job and you gotta take care of your family. And I, it, there's, that's just not right.
Was the ban on political symbols, did that come from a bigger coordinated conservative effort?
No, it was just people saw it. Um, you know, again, all that stuff started coming to Newburgh about a year and a half, a little over a year and a half ago. And it should have never been allowed in our schools. So, no, there was no, you know, this whole thing is on our, on our side, the no vote. And what we're fighting for, kids and parents, is, is all local. Um, I've, I wouldn't know if I met somebody from Washington DC. I've never even been to Washington DC. I haven't talked to anybody from Washington DC. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I've talked to lots of different reporters and things like that because everybody's interested. But uh, no, no, no national. Uh, people came to us.
Uh, the ban specifically, like this was just proposed, like you guys, the four board members?
No, it's just community members came to us. I mean, people came to us. And uh, you know, we have nine schools in our community and that's where it all started. And, and if you go to our schools now, they're filled with these flags and banners. And so as we move forward with a new superintendent, we'll have to look at the policy, tighten it up and, and sit down and, and, and get this back to where it should be.
I think the claim has been made that like, so much focus has gone onto this ban and the recalls, that like, not enough attention has been paid for like actual education policies. Like what is your, I guess like, what's your response to that?
Well, people, I hope they're buckled up for this answer. We didn't create that. This was all put in place. Should have never been in the schools. The recalls are totally from the, from the other side. Uh, they shouldn't have done it. Um, again, I think the elections speak for themselves. Um, and that we should stand by elections. And so we didn't do any of that. And all that money's being spent by those people that are, they're, they're pushing that recall. As far as, you know, our focus on education, that's been our focus the whole time. When you look at the, the flags and banners, we didn't push that. We just said, don't put the flag and banners in our school, focus on education. The American flag, New York state flag, that's it, pure and simple. And uh, the, the issues could have been dealt with in a much different way. All of this has been pushed by the other side, not our side. And people have to understand that uh, we've been wanting to, to push. And if we're, if we're allowed to stay on the school board and fight, that is absolutely gonna be the focus moving forward. Um, we are going to uh, spend uh, all of our board meetings on education and, and stop this. And uh, it's all because people didn't like the way the elections turned out. And that's, and, and again, the Amer- the people in America, they get a vote. The people in Newburgh and Dundee voted. And we, they voted us into office. They voted Renee Powell and Trevor DeHart and Brian Shannon and Dave Brown into office for a reason. And we are supporting what, what those voters wanted. Maybe the next election will go a different way. And uh, you know, a- a- again, that's why we live in a great country. You know, we get that opportunity every, you know, about four years to vote. And uh, but we didn't cause all this turmoil. We would have loved to have been on education the whole time.
How do you plan to judge whether something is political or controversial?
Say it again.
How do you plan to judge whether, like if somebody comes to you with a complaint about some kinda display in a school? Like how, what's your like judgment for like, this is political or this is not political?
Yeah. No, that's a good question. I think moving forward, again, we're in a different world than we were a couple of years ago. So that's gonna have to be something that uh, I think our leaders are gonna have to sit down and, and really look at. I, my, for me, it's keep it simple. You know, um, the kids really have lost no rights in this whole thing. The kids can do uh, anything they could do before. Uh, this is more about staff and, and what, and they have regulations. It's a job. You know, they go to work and get a paycheck. And there's policies in place in a school. Policies in a school are like laws that we have to abide by when we drive a car and things like that. And so we'll have to look at those and uh, and tighten those up. And it'll always usually in a district, come back to the school board and how they're gonna vote on that. Um, I would like to keep it as simple as possible. Um, a teacher still has the opportunity to take a, a subject like Black Lives Matter and, and teach the, the uh, the subject matter. And then they move on. It shouldn't be something that, that's a constant part of our schools and decorates our schools.
You had mentioned that Franklin Graham inspired you to run for school board. Do you consider yourself a religious person?
Oh, absolutely. Jesus is awesome. I'm, I'm definitely a, a Jesus follower. Uh, I'm definitely, uh, Franklin Graham was at the Billy Graham Crusades. And uh, we went with a couple of, a couple, there was eleven thousand people in Canby. And uh, when he came out, he just said, what do you do? And I looked at him and it kinda caught my attention. And he let it marinate for about thirty seconds. And he said, what do you do? And he let it marinate for like thirty seconds and eleven thousand people got quiet. And he said it the third time. And he goes, are you involved in local politics? Are, are you on the uh, city council, the county commissioners, the PTA, the school board? He said, school board. And I was like, nope, 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 nope. I've been a coach. And um, I still came out of there not thinking what I was gonna do, prayed about it. And, and I just had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people come to me, you know, and ask me to run for the school board. And after being in, in, in public school meetings for, you know, twenty years, I was like, no. And uh, but uh, you know, I think when a lot of people come at you, the Lord would kinda move my heart uh, to keep serving, just in a little different way than, than coaching. And so Franklin Graham was awesome. Uh, they were right. He's not the speaker. His dad was. Uh, but for me, he was better because I think he changed my life on what he said that night.
With the Christian church's history of homophobia especially, do you think that, and like, I don't mean to accuse you of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that there could be a perception that like, as somebody who's a strong Christian, like, are you bringing that into your role as a school board member?
I pray all the time for our school. So I guess the answer would be yes to that part of it. Um, I come to our house for Thanksgiving and one of my friends is gay and he's at a set in our table. He spent the night at our house. Um, I'm not gonna judge on, in anybody's decision on gender. You know, I think it's one of those things where, again, that's been so twisted. Uh, all four of us feel that uh, that is not our job. You know, that's something people can deal with down the road on their own. Uh, but uh, I welcome everybody into our schools, always have, always will. I've coached kids. I have friends that are, that are gay and it's, it's fine. And it's uh, as far as the home- And it's, uh, as far as the homophobic in a church, if it's a church, it's not, uh, uh, you know, there's so many different kinds of churches. You know, you can say the word church. And here, here in Newburgh, you know, we've, we've been considered a churchy town for a long time because we have like thirty-eight churches. But there's some churches that are very different philosophies, very different thinking. And, and, you know, some people say, "I don't agree with that church or that church." But, you know, I would say a lot of people have a kindergarten education of Jesus, you know. If you never look at your Bible, you never go to church, you know, it's just like not knowing a lot about being a reporter. You know, I don't know what it's like to be a reporter. I've never done it. So I'm sure it's a lot of hard work standing out in the rain to interview crazy school board members. But, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm a strong believer in Jesus. And, and I think just everybody I know, they don't judge people because they're gay. They just don't. And I don't. And I know Brian doesn't, and Renee doesn't, and Trevor doesn't.
Um, so the lawsuit that you guys filed claimed that you guys didn't feel safe in Newburgh in some instances, can you tell me more about that?
Um, I can, all I can say is, is we had people attack us. And, uh, there's a doxing law, uh, in Oregon. We were one of the first states to have that. And you just can't go online and attack people and try to get them fired. And so we'll see how that all turns out.
But as you're going about your day-to-day life in Newburgh, do you feel like it's safe? Like, it's kind of, there's been a lot of division in the town?
Sure.
A lot of tension between people? Like, how do you feel going about your day?
That's a, we talked about this last night. It's, it's an interesting question. Um, I've had people threaten me many times. Uh, there's been a local business lady here in town who's wanted to, has said to the Democratic Party, she wants to destroy me. If you look that word up in the dictionary, that means destroy. Destroy doesn't mean harm. It means destroy. So what does that mean? She's tried to downplay that, but yeah, it kinda unnerves you a little bit. Uh, people have called on my phone and said the awfulest things you can imagine. Uh, they have, uh, I haven't had somebody come up and try to, you know, beat me up or anything like that. But I've been looking over your shoulders the whole time we've been here, because I keep my head on a swivel now. So that's unfortunate, you know. Uh, you, you have to be careful. Um, you know, it's, it's a tough one. I, 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 I really dislike that part of the whole thing. But there has been some very mean people. And I don't wanna say names because, um, I don't think this is the time and place for that.
That's all the questions that I had for you. Is there anything that I haven't asked about that you wanted to add?
No, you guys, I know we're standing in the rain getting all wet, but I, I appreciate you guys doing a hard job. Um, I would just ask you, keep pushing on education. Uh, we're divided in Oregon, you know. And I think that, uh, you guys have a huge role and ability to keep asking the tough questions and try to report side, both sides fairly. I think right now, um, I think public schools can be amazing. I really do. Um, I've worked in private schools. I think there's gonna be a new big group of homeschool-type people. I think public schools need to get our, our focus back to, to retain a lot of people. Um, and we, we've just gotta keep it simple and, and get back to education. That's what parents want. So, um, I'm gonna keep fighting for those parents, uh, because they're the ones that need the voice. And, uh, again, I think you guys can, you know, keep helping people out with that because, you know, you are the big voice. You have the microphone. So I appreciate what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for taking the time to meet with us.